Good evening and welcome to the June 23rd, 2025 meeting of the Shawnee City Council. I'm Mayor Mickey Santafer and I will be chairing this meeting. I'll do a roll call at this time. Councilmember Whitting.
Present.
Councilmember Gillette.
Present.
Councilmember Murphy.
Present.
Councilmember Kimling.
Present.
Councilmember Nappin.
Present.
Councilmember Steen. Councilmember Walters.
Present.
And Councilmember Birchfield is online, is she?
Present.
Thank you. Now join me for the pledge of allegiance with a moment of silence, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to explain the procedures for public input in an effort to enhance residents' ability to present information to the governing body. Anyone interested in addressing the governing body is strongly encouraged to sign up to speak by noon on the day of the meeting, but it's not required. Information has been posted online about how to sign up. By policy, comments are limited to five minutes and no person may speak more than once to any one agenda item. Only comments related to city business are permitted. Disruptive acts are not permitted as per policy number seven and will not be tolerated. After you're finished speaking, please sign the form on the podium to ensure we have an accurate record of your name and address. Additionally, comments can be submitted to the entire governing body via email at governingbody@thecityofshawnee.org. Next. Next item on the is consent agenda. Would anyone on the council like to remove anything on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on this item, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is business from the floor. Is there anyone here to speak about any specific item on the agenda? Please wait until the item is discussed. If you are here to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, now is the time to speak. Did anyone sign up?
Yes, Mayor, we had one pre-register, Beth Clavennadine.
Okay. Come to the podium, please, and afterwards sign your name and address to the forum.
Greetings. I'm Beth Clavennadine and I live at 23210 West 46th Street in Greenview Ridge. And it's the subdivision that's at 47th and K-7, and that's the reason I am speaking from business from the floor tonight. This particular intersection at 47th and K-7 has seen a significant increase in traffic in the last couple of years. What I would say due in part to the increase in industry at 43rd and K-7 and 43rd and Claire. I am here for this business to ask and implore the city council to take a moment to pause on building more industry in that area. We have seen an increase in the traffic and as a result, we've, we know as of March, there were at least two serious fatal accidents that occurred at that particular intersection, one of which, I remember Councilmember Steens acknowledged in our March city council meeting, had two residents of Shawnee that perished in them. So I'm hoping for the city council to reconsider growing that industry and development in that area until such time as the infrastructure meets up with the traffic demand. We know that, and I know, that the highway itself is the responsibility of the state, but the growth of the industry in that area is the responsibility of us as a city. So we need to be thinking about, is the infrastructure prepared in terms of traffic patterns for that particular space and for the industry that we're putting in there? When we were at the last city council meeting, there was a unanimous vote to put in a $30 million industrial complex at 43rd and Claire, and it would increase the amount of traffic there that's already congested as is. I've taken pictures during the rush hour time and there is definitely a backup going north and south at both lights at 47th and 43rd. I would hope that you all would take some time over the next two weeks before your next city council meeting and do the same and observe that area and see, has the traffic pattern increased significantly? I would want you guys to consider taking a moment to say, should we consider putting more industry in that area or should we pause it for a time until the infrastructure becomes conditional to address the traffic pattern? That is what I wanted to present to you all tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else sign up? Next item on the agenda is mayor's, mayor's items, and I don't have anything this evening. So we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is staff items. Item number one is to consider approving the unit price in an order of 5,000 tons of salt from Independent Salt Company for 2025 and 2026. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item will be handled by Kevin Manning, our Director of Public Works. Good evening. This first item is for the purchase of about 5,000 tons of salt. This is intended to basically replace our stores that we used in the last, where we used quite a bit of salt. We're buying this at $49.90 per ton, and so the total purchase is $249,500.
Any questions for staff? Tony.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Kevin, I know we were, we did a great job the last couple of years where we had, those tents were really full of salt and had been bought many, many years before. Just for comparison's sake, what was the, do you know what the price was at the time and what we're looking at today from a market value standpoint?
The price was very similar. I don't have the exact number for you, I can get that, but it was, it hasn't risen that much, I don't believe. So this is pretty similar to what it was in past years.
Great. If you just send that to the council later, that'd be great, just we had that for Charleston. But I knew that we had a ton of salt in the tents before, so going back up at a good price. So thank you.
Anyone signed up for this? Anyone in the audience like to speak on this? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion. Tony.
Move to approve.
Here. Got a motion and a second on this item, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. Motion passes. Item number two is to consider bids and award the engineering design contract for the Johnson Drive and Barker Road intersection improvements project, PN 3625 BHC. Paul.
Once again, Kevin Manning on this item. This item tonight is for basically a contract to redesign this intersection and we're not going to see dramatic differences out there, but essentially what we're looking at doing is basically as you come down west on Johnson Drive towards this curve that you see on your screen, the roadway, kind of the roadway, super elevation, kind of pushes you kind of to the outside of the curve. So it makes it more difficult for someone coming westbound and eastbound to kind of traverse that curve in a safe manner. We have had two fatalities at this location, basically in over the last 10 years. And so staff has applied for basically K dot safety funding for this intersection. We received $700,000 in safety funding, funding towards modification of this intersection. So essentially what we're going to be looking at doing is modifying the super elevation to kind of add a little bit of a bank. And so it will basically make it easier for people to make that movement without kind of sliding into the outside lane. We'll also be adding some, basically a friction treatment to the pavement. And so once again, as people are coming, making that turn, the pavement will actually be a little rougher along that stretch. That's by design and will make it more difficult for vehicles to lose control along there. Part of that, we will be kind of modifying the tie-in on Barker because basically the outside of the curb will be getting higher. And so we'll be, you know, modifying maybe, you know, 50, 100 feet of Barker to basically tie back in to Johnson. So the plan is to currently design this project now and then construct it next year in 2026.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Anyone in the audience sign up for this? Or you don't? Tony.
Yeah, Kevin, thanks. And I know we had discussion with staff last week about the embankment on this, and my concern mostly is on Barker Road, you did describe that. Will that be relocating at all to the kind of the wests at all? Or because from what I see, taking that when, especially when baseball's going on, volleyball's, heavy traffic, you know, as you're going south or westbound and then making that turn north, that embankment in turn to make a left-hand turn is, it's, it's a troublesome corner for a lot of folks when it's busy. When it's not busy, it's, it's not much of a problem. So you described the leveling of that street because it's much lower than it is today. But is there any, is there anything that can be done structurally and design-wise to make that turn a safer turn? That's.
So you're talking about the westbound to southbound left turn can be challenging? Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, onto Barker Road, yeah, from, from Johnson on to Barker.
Yeah, so generally just looking at this location, Barker probably doesn't come in at a perfect 90-degree angle, which is kind of the easiest way to make that turn. So that's something we'll take a look at in design as well, see if we can modify the way that ties in a little bit to change the angle a little bit. Right now, it's probably, you know, maybe 70, 80 degrees, maybe bump that out to 90. That wouldn't make that turn easier. So that's something we can take a look at in design.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Just want to make sure that's part of the comprehensive plan. Thanks.
Er. Yeah, just looking at the funding sources, I just wanted to clarify. So it looks like, correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like it's about a million-dollar project, 700,000 of it we're getting. So we'll be funding about, to the tune of about 300,000, is that correct? Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone sign up for this? No? Anyone in the audience like to speak on this? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion. Any?
Move to approve.
Sierra. Got a motion and a second on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. Motion passes. Item number three is to consider bids and award the contract for the Lake Crest and 55th Terrace and Brown Ridge CMP replacement project, PN 3600. Paul.
Once again, Kevin Manning on this item. This is another stormwater smack project you're looking at tonight. So we're looking to award the bid to Infrastructure Solutions. These projects, you can kind of see the different locations up on your screen here. We're going to be replacing about 850, a little more than 850 linear feet of corrugated metal pipe with new concrete pipe. And we are anticipating some delays getting some construction materials in. So after this contract, it's awarded, we still anticipate about two months before we're going to get started. So we're looking at basically around a September 1 start date and for this to take around 90 days to complete.
Any questions for staff?
Just real quick, well, they do, you said 90 days completion. Well, there's three different sites here. Will they do one, it takes a couple of weeks, and then the second?
So, I mean, they have, it's kind of their prerogative how they want to approach the project, but in general, it's sufficient if they are mobilizing on one side and knocking that out as opposed to spreading out.
I was just wanting to get an idea for, if I get questions from Lake Point residents. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone sign up for this? Anyone in the audience like to speak on this? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. Motion passes. Item number four is to present and funding, a presentation and funding request for the Americana and ALS World Cup event. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be handling this item and then we do have a presentation tonight to give you a preview of potential event. As this, tonight's the first presentation of this event, we're going to talk about budget, but then we'll read, we'll probably bring the funding request back to you at the first meeting in July. So we are less than one year now away from World Cup and whether you think it's going to be the biggest thing that's ever happened to the area or you're not sure. One thing that I can tell you is that there have been endless conversations, meetings, planning at the regional and local level. We have staff members on regional communications teams and hazard response teams and public safety teams and marketing teams. We've certainly been meeting locally. So right now, everybody's trying to figure out what they're going to do, and by everybody I mean different cities. Everybody's trying to decide if they want to do a marquee event, a watch party, what the cost of that is, logistics. But one thing for sure with each locality is you're trying to find something that's unique, something that sets you apart from the other communities in the area so that you can set a date, so that you can get it on the regional World Cup calendar, so that you can sort of mark what your territory is. And in this case, for Shawnee, the presentation tonight is an Americana and ALS event in the downtown to showcase our downtown. And I'll let Eddie Crane with Complete Construction Services in a second go through that event and what it looks like. The reason that we're this far ahead of presenting and then bringing some budget information is because since it is such a big event in the area, stuff like booking stages, booking musical acts, generators, gates, tents, tables, all that kind of stuff is being done now. And so that's why we're here this evening. So the first time that we talked about this was a couple of months ago at the budget retreat and we threw some ideas up to the governing body. One thing was this county loop, which was a transportation idea that the county had. It looks like that's going to be a pretty expensive endeavor and maybe not something that would bring a lot of return to the city. But then we were focusing on that unique event, that event to bring for residents, to bring visitors to the downtown. And at that time, we had thought somewhere around 117,000 would be the city ask. And we've refined those numbers quite a bit and that'll be part of the presentation tonight. So I'm going to bring up Eddie Crane. Some of you know him as the owner of Complete Construction Services, a Shawnee business, but he also has a long background as a musical events coordinator and producer. And so he's going to go through the, the concept here. This has been an endeavor by a team from the chamber, the city and other key stakeholders. And a lot of work has gone into what you're going to see here in a sec. So I'm going to turn it over to Eddie to go through the event idea. Owner of Complete Construction. Oh, I'm sorry. Just a peon, business development that we've mostly met and hello, everybody and hello, everybody. Boy, I don't have a slick presentation. I will say this, I have 20 years in hospitality and restaurants, that's my background. And for a spell there, I went to the other worst business, which was the music industry. And in that, booked bands, had a record label, managed some bands, you know, had a foray into that. Travis Fields, my partner out there, had the Westport Saloon at one time and we together put together Westport Roots Festival, which Travis ran on for great success. I had halfway to Winfield. Anyways, I'm not going to, you know, bore you with all the details of it right now and just the general idea, which is, I looked at Moonlight Market and saw the format that you guys already pre-established. It made a lot of sense based off our experience. Boy, you could put a stage right here in front of City Hall, have, you know, tent, have vendors, have all the bars and, you know, the hospitality involved. And then you also have the Aztecs. You could essentially have two stages of shows operating complementarily, family-friendly, bluegrass, Americana, that genre, that's what my history is in. Floated to Ann at the chamber and she's like, what's bluegrass? And then didn't hear much about it until, you know, hey, Shawnee's looking to do something for World Cup. So we got a little more earnest with it, laid it out and there's, we've gone through a lot of the details, but it's still loose because we want to know what Shawnee wants. And we have site plans, worked up a budget, we have a pretty good idea of what the acts would cost. And, but Paul's right, this is something you need to start on a year in advance because you can't just call a band two weeks out and have them there. So I guess any questions you might have on that? I can elaborate. I think, have you guys seen the, the deck? Oh, here.
Walk through it.
Okay.
Advance it up there. Can you advance it? You can advance it with.
Okay, so I'm going to go through. Okay, the team is essentially a collaboration between the Shawnee Chamber and Travis, I introduced myself, and Andrew Morris. Andrew's with a band called The Match Sellers. I don't know if you guys are familiar, but he tours the US, Europe, et cetera, has a lot of good connections. So he'd be kind of our promotional band connection. What I had just? Anything? Okay. Um, I can let you read through it, I'm not going to read it verbatim. I kind of covered the idea of the music festival aspect. So is this just the music portion and what we're talking about right now? Okay. Um. I don't know how familiar you are with, I'm not trying to take up, I'm already talking too much. Um, this format has been proven out a lot in a lot of cities, a lot of regional spots and, and it could be yearly events and something that's ongoing. We're, we as a collective group, I'm not looking to make anything out of it. It should be a free event for Shawnee, that's the idea. That's why we're coming to you for budgetarily. I guess, let me explain, I think we broke it down in the marketing. Here's the groups you want to kind of address. One is national and international visitors. So it's not bluegrass, it's not music festival, it's Americana, American, that, excuse me, that idea in order to be appealing to somebody who doesn't really speak English, American Music Festival. Second aspect is people who already support the scene. You know, there's already a rich group that shows up and participates and chases and goes to see these bands. Third would be just music supporters, Casey Uar, The Bridge, et cetera. We already have relationships with them. And then lastly, of course, would be the Shawnee area, which is family, locals, Moonlight Market. So you already see that. Um, we're not really looking to do this more than one year. If it really works, have at it, Shawnee, but Eddie's got stuff to do. So that's the idea for beyond. A lot of the breweries in the area have pitched a beer festival aspect tied to it. That's not really my bailiwick and not what I'm doing. That's a kind of a different adjacent thing. Shawnee Chamber and us discussing thought it would work best on the same day, that would occur earlier in the day, be self-funded, and I will let them speak on it. We're just talking about the music aspect. Location, I don't know if this is, shows up quite that well. If you look on the yellow, you know, City Hall, the stage would maybe be to the left and I know there's a couple of light posts, we kind of fixed that, maybe we camped it at an angle. The Aztec is right across the street, that's got a capacity for around 200. We picture, what do you think, 7, 800 and the, 7, 800 people in the parking lot and surroundings? Yeah, so maybe 1,000 people in and out, everywhere from Hanks to Service, all involved, doors open, Moonlight Market, you know that. We've marked off the area in the red for the potential beer festival. We've got street closures kind of based off of what Moonlight Market works, plus some of Paul's input. And then we have areas marked for back of house, load in, you know, parking, et cetera. We're looking at Saturday, June 20th. We fretted about this a lot because we didn't want to compete with a game, but because it's a global event, most of the games will be done by like 1:00 PM. So that's great for us, so we're thinking evening. I can talk about that a bit. We're looking at roughly 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM, maybe 11:00, right in there, two stages, you know, the main stage and then Aztec, the programming, like I said, alternating. So one person could see every act, you don't have to miss anything, multiple stages. I mean, everybody's trying to plan a party and I've, I've got connections down to visit KC, some people down, you know, with KC 2026, they are looking for events to promote that help enrich what Kansas City is doing. So that could, this could be Shawnee's. I know there's a lot of program in that month, it's a month-long event. We have six games, quarterfinal game, I mean, every business development thing, that's all anyone's talking about is World Cup. So that's what I see as the opportunity to put Shawnee on the map locally amongst the other municipalities and the local operators is like, hey, that's a place that's doing stuff. That's the idea behind it. Target audience, I talked about that. Budget, he'll look at that. And thank you. I don't think, you have any questions? Thoughts? I know it's kind of abstract compared to what we do. Again, I say you've got old Shawnee town and Moonlight Market, those kind of the templates for the pulse of it, if that helps. So I'll talk a little bit about budget. So obviously, we will run the budget through the city. So receipts required, we will know where every penny would be going. The total event budget right now is at $110,000 and that's as a free to the public event. We could certainly change that, but I think the idea would be that we would want to make it free to our residents and everybody else. The group, along with the, the chamber and the music coordinator team, believes that we could achieve about $30,000 in sponsorships and grants, they have some leads on that. So the balance request for the city funding for this signature event would be right now $80,000. We certainly have those funds available in either transient guest tax funds or EcoDevo funding. And so the request, the first request, and it won't be today, it'll be in the first meeting in July, would be that $50,000, which is what would be required to make the deposits for the, to secure the dates with the bands and the agents, certainly going after a headliner within that genre, and then about $25,000 to secure the deposits for the production requirements, which is staging, lighting, tents, tables, generators and such. And then an initial $5,000 ask as we start to administer and market this event. So a lot of the marketing will be done by the World Cup Committee once we get it on the calendar, but we certainly want to make sure everybody's aware that Shawnee's doing this and that we sort of stake our claim to that Saturday in this Americana and ALS type event. So again, that's the concept before you. Again, we've been working on this for quite a while. Eddie has a really accomplished team and in our meetings with them, they've already talked about specific acts to target providers of stuff like staging and lighting. So we're confident that they will be able to undertake an event like this. So any questions that you have either tonight or over the next couple of weeks, we'll be happy to get you answers to those.
Yeah, thank you and a nice job. Looks like an awesome presentation, awesome idea. I talked to you a little bit about this, I just wanted to, I'm, I'm pursuing this primarily as sort of a give-back, if you will, and like parked and stuff, and also an opportunity to, for us to showcase Shawnee throughout the area. That said, is there, I'm guessing you don't have any estimate on any maybe ROI? Obviously it's going to be good for the local, the local taverns.
Part of that is what should be open by then, Marigold should be done and open, Gilda's actually should be open here in the next couple of weeks, but the investment that the governing body and the citizens have made into the downtown to showcase the downtown. But no, we wouldn't have any idea, everything would be open, we would hope, but we haven't done anything on ROI. One thing on that, I think you could take whatever surge that the local operations have due to Moonlight Market and hope to at least use that as a metric for at least day of.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So Travis, right?
I'm Eddie, that's Travis.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right.
Thank you for your presentation. So I'm going to ask her probably a dumb question, but how many people attend the World Cup? Like, how many people are expecting total? It's like.
So the number we've heard for Kansas City is 600,000. Over the course of the month. The course of the month, yeah. And it will surge as it gets closer, bigger profile games. Actually, I think it might more be a bell curve when there's more activity happening, there's a whatever band home, I mean, excuse me, whatever, team home bases in Kansas City and their fan base, even if they're not primarily playing in Kansas City, they want to be near them, they want to run into them at a restaurant and things like that. So it's, it's kind of, at least from the '37, 2026 World Cup presentations I've sat through, it's, I, I think this is kind of like a thing where you can hang out on the highway and you're like, I don't see a bus, but one will hit you. I think that's what this event is coming towards us. I mean, I went to the '96 Olympics and it was mind-boggling, so. And this is five times that.
And I'm, and I agree, I mean, Shawnee is very close in proximity, obviously, to downtown. I mean, we're not that far from there. As far as like, Paul, maybe this is a question for you, our, our chief, like, as far as security, and I know that's not really probably worked into this right now, I'm sure that's something, obviously, that's been discussed, but would we, does that require, obviously, a lot of extra funding and will we need to add that into this budget as well?
I know, because it's just a one day or a one, you know, three to 10, it's not like a four-day event where we'll have to have cycles and a ton of overtime. I think the chief will tell you that he's already told most of his officers that that month next year will be sort of off limits for vacation just because we don't know what's coming. And so we'll be fully prepared for whatever we need. And I think we're also going to make sure that we maintain all of our force within the city of Shawnee and not maybe help out other areas because making sure that we have everything we need here in the city. What was your question, kind of budgetarily?
Yeah, I was just curious, like this one that we're looking at here.
Based off our experience and, you know, I wish Travis could come up here, but this is kind of an exhaustive, like, full-case scenario and we feel that it's, it's never ever speaking absolutes, but it's highly unlikely this would ever be a more ask. We believe it can come down from there. This is kind of a, without the city taking a bite out of anything like trash disposal or security, you know, and this is still kind of roughed out, but this is a kind of high watermark of what we would expect to put on something of this quality.
Sure.
That helps.
And then I just have one quick last question. As far as like parking, I know we were talking about, like you were saying shuttles or something like that, are we still kind of working out those details and stuff that we were to, because, I mean, we don't know, we're saying 1,000, but we, it could be larger, I mean, we really don't know numbers.
And we have to have further discussions on the actual footprint. We've had some discussions on how far out do we close either Johnson Drive or Neiman as far as having a large open place, but those are conversations that we'll continue to have with the governing body. How far, how much of downtown are you comfortable closing?
But those are conversations that we'll continue to have with the governing body. How far, how much of downtown are you comfortable closing? And depending on that, we'll probably have to have some, maybe some shuttle locations, some remote parking, depending on how big that closure area is.
Thank you.
Tony.
I did have a question just to follow up, kind of to Kurt's original question. If we could get the ROI currently on how that impacts, what the impact is to the local businesses on Moonlight Market nights? Just so we can have a framework to go by. I think that would at least be helpful.
Thanks, Mayor. Eddie, I just want to say thanks for stepping forward on this. I know music is a passion of yours and an old passion. We've had some interesting discussions about our music in the old days. Anyways, I think the exposure to downtown Shawnee and an event like this is fabulous and is huge. Puts us on the map regionally, gives people a reason to come to downtown Shawnee, be re-exposed to what we've been able to accomplish here in downtown the last five, six years. So I'm fully in support of how we do this. I know that we have to work out all the metrics. But it sounds like you've got a real good, rough idea. We'll get down to the nitty-gritty part of it, both funding, I don't know if from, this can be funded through parks or other funding sources that we're not dipping into the general fund for all this. But thank you for stepping forward to do this. I think it's a great way for us to be proactive for once, get in front of it. And you have my full support. So thank you.
Anyone else? This was for informational purposes only.
Could you bring up that first slide? I think there was a 300,000 number on it. So how does that 300,000 tie into what we're talking about now?
Yeah, so I, that was going to include all of those bullet points. So I think we've decided that the business grant program, while maybe a good idea, is maybe not feasible or tough to define. The county loop is probably not going to happen at this point. So you could look at that coming down by essentially to the cost of this event, this really being what we fund or what the governing body funds for World Cup. So at this point, besides some marketing for banners or some advertising, I really feel like this, we've honed in on this being a single, unique event tied around World Cup.
Yeah, I guess my commentary at this point is that it does look like it'd be a fun event and I'm not opposed to the event itself happening. I think I'm a little leery of spending city dollars on it. But that requested in tonight, so we'll ponder and we'll get back to it. Thank you.
Tony.
Yeah, just a follow-up point. One of the things that we can certainly do to curb those costs, I really agree with House Member Kemmling on overspending. But co-op marketing opportunities for all the other businesses that are in Shawnee that will be a part of that, that's going to help lower some costs. So with some ingenuity and some thoughts and marketing, I think we do a really good job of lowering the overall expenses to our citizens.
Anyone else? This was for information only. We'll move on. Item number five, staff report on the updated construction schedule for the 5900 Monticello Emergency Storm Water Pipe Repair Project and McInnany Drive SIP project. Paul?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, our Public Works Director is going to go over two high-profile projects that we've been talking about for quite some time and they've had sort of a schedule change and the reasons why. So I've asked Kevin Manning to go through those, present those, why the recommendation is going to be made to move those projects back and then take any questions you may have.
A good evening. I'm going to start off with the 5900 Monticello project first. And so if you look at the picture on your left on your screen, you can kind of see the red hashed area to the top. That is basically where there is a kind of a sinkhole forming. And then there is a basically a yellow and black kind of hashed line that runs along the west side of Monticello, which was also going to be part of the project to basically line that. And then you'll see a diagonal line basically on the bottom of that picture running across Monticello Road. And so that's an existing arch pipe that's in bad shape. And you recall, we were going to basically replace that with a reinforced concrete box. So the issue that we're running into is that, you know, we were, when we contacted our supplier for the reinforced concrete box, they were telling us that we could get those by July 1st. And we're getting closer to that date and does not appear that's going to be ready. They told us basically they can't get the rebar that they need to make those. They're basically having delays getting that material in. So it's frustrating for us. But the bottom line is it's basically less and less likely that we'd be able to get that done before school starts. And we don't really want to put ourselves in a situation where we're trying to get it in and then we can't get done for weather or some other reason. And then school starts because that would be a nightmare out there. If basically Monticello is shut down and you're trying to have school in session. So where we're at this point is looking at basically pushing just that diagonal line. The replacement of that pipe with a reinforced concrete box, moving that work until June of next year. And the pipe on the west side of Monticello would still be lined and we would still be repairing the sinkhole. That's kind of shown in the red box on that picture as well. So that work is already ongoing and will be done before school gets started. We're looking to push that one section towards June. We will still be purchasing the boxes and we will have those basically available. And so basically, worst-case scenario, we're hoping that section will continue to hold up until June of next year. If it doesn't, for some reason, we will have the material on site and we will basically be getting out there and replacing that as soon as possible. It will have to be a little bit of utility work done. But we're going to jump on that as soon as possible if that occurs. We're hoping that's not the case. And if it's not, then we will hop on it in June of 2026 and go in there and replace the box at that, at that point. But the alternative at this point is to proactively replace it during school. And that's just not something we really want to explore and that would just be a mess out there. So if for some reason that pipe does fail, I just want to remind the governing body, what we're talking about is you would start to see maybe a small divot in the roadway that would grow over time. But this is not something where the road is just going to collapse a few feet or anything like that. More than likely, it's going to be gradual. And we would go out there. So staff does not feel like this is a safety concern per se. But if there is a sinkhole that begins to form out there, it is possible that we could have to go out there and close the road. We're hoping we avoid that. Any questions on, on this particular project before I move on to McInnany?
So given what everything you said, obviously it's wise to wait until next year. So will the sinkhole itself, when you fix that, require road closures on Monticello?
There may, I don't, I don't think that's going to be the case, no. And we're going to get all the work I talked about is going to be done prior to school starting. And so that'll still be done over the summer. It's ongoing right now. So everything, the pipelining on the west side and the sinkhole repair will be done outside of, or basically during the summer.
And then my other question you actually addressed, which is the safety concern. Given that that dotted line runs real close to the sidewalk and the sure number of people and kids that walk across that area every single day, I guess I'm glad to hear that it would be very gradual.
I mean, generally what we see is, you know, maybe after a large rain event, you'll start to see maybe something happening because essentially all that's happening is that a pipe going underneath the roadway has kind of lost its bottom. And, you know, they're continues to kind of wash out. And so eventually, you know, you start to see a little bit of sinking, but it doesn't happen all at once. You know, that grows over time. But if, obviously, if that had happened, we would be going out there and closing the road and moving forward with our project as quickly as possible. We're hoping that's not going to be the case.
Just want to make sure we're not going to lose a kid down the hole. No, thank you.
Also, on the exit, that is going out of the school, that drive coming out of the school for the kids to get out of school, will that be done before school starts?
Yes. Well, so.
So we're not going to cut off the driveway because that'll put everybody on the other side of the school.
So.
An hour before they could get out of there.
Yeah, the pipe running underneath that, we're going to be lining that. So we're not going to be like open cutting the roadway. We're going to be basically going in and lining the pipe underneath the ground. So there will never be any open cut of the roadway that will need to be closed.
Good, thank you.
That, Kevin, it actually was going to be my question because I'm aware that there's some construction going on there currently. And I think it's on school property. I didn't know whether or not we're going to have to repatch the street and go through it or not. But we won't actually have to cut through the top of the road. We're going to go under. Okay.
We'll be open, cut, open cutting the roadway on Monticello and we're going in the reinforced.
But I meant the entrance to the school this year. And then next year, you'll, you'll take care of the street and that'll be the full-blown money. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? That was for informational only and we'll move on. Next item.
They have one more on that one about McInnany Drive.
Oh, sorry.
All right, moving on to the next project. So we were, we were approaching kind of the endpoint of design here and we had had some public meetings. And through those public meetings, we had some residents that brought some stormwater concerns to us. And you can kind of look at kind of the middle of the project, you'll see kind of a vertical blue line. And basically, there's kind of a pipe that's going across McInnany down the middle. It's an existing pipe. And there's a fair amount of area that drains that right now. And then basically drains from the north side of McInnany to the south and then down. And basically, there have been some drainage issues there in the past. And with basically the greater the roadway, it's likely when we put curb and gutter in, that area will probably see more water. And so this is really, I think, a positive that through the public involvement process, we were able to hear some of these concerns. And I think we are, we're basically looking at going back and making some modifications to our storm drainage system to the south there, but potentially building some swales. We're still kind of investigating what we want to do on that. But on the long, or the long story short, it's going to improve drainage for those houses to the south where there's kind of an existing problem that we basically don't want to make worse because there is the potential that we're adding more water. And then as part of that too, there are some utility, with utility concerns with that additional work where you may have to have some power poles or things moved. And so that's going to take some additional time. We were hoping to basically get this project started, you know, in basically in July, but with these additional concerns, we're looking at to push this project back several months. And with that, it's unlikely we could get the whole thing done in 2025. And so what we're looking at this point is maybe letting this project in November of this year and maybe getting a little bit of kind of prep work done. But the lion's share of this project would take place in 2026. And we would still have our 51st Street project, which is another SIP project ongoing. These two projects would necessarily overlap exactly. This one, we're going to be a little bit ahead. We would ideally like to get this out and really start construction aggressively, probably in March on the majority of the project, assuming we have good temperatures. Where 51st Street would be a little bit farther behind. So although those projects are kind of close together, there's not a lot of reason that, we don't see a lot of concerns with both these areas being under construction at the same time. And if someone does, for some reason, use McInnany Drive to get to 51st Street, there's, there's different paths they can take to get around through there. So we're not concerned about both projects being done at the same time. And we do want to delay this a little bit so we can make sure that the residents' stormwater concerns are addressed.
Very good. Sure.
I want to thank you for taking time to address the concerns of residents. I know I was contacted and I was really happy to hear that you've gone back and making a good project even better. So really happy to hear that. I did have a question on the Monticello project. He said that it was held up because of rebar, correct? Is this an issue that we possibly see as we continue to have projects? Are we expecting any other potential delays?
I think it's a possibility. I mean, I've, I've heard that there have been other like KDOT projects that have been delayed for similar reasons. This one is the kind of the first I've heard of it before I heard of those other items. I mean, rebar is kind of a basic construction material. And so it's, like I said, it's very frustrating that we can't get that in on time. But I mean, we have had discussions with the governing body, you know, just with some of the federal funds that are available for stormwater improvements that we could be seeing project delays. And so those could go hand in hand. That's speculation on my part to some degree. But we're hoping this isn't going to be the case moving forward. We haven't, I haven't, I haven't heard this about pipe. But, you know, the boxes and pipes are somewhat similar construction. So there's a possibility we may see more of this in the future.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay, this was for informational only. We will move on. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items. Item number one is to ratify the semi-monthly claim for June 23rd, 2025, the amount of $9,296,319.11. Anyone signed up for this? Anyone in the audience like to speak on this? Anyone on the council have any questions? I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Jeannie?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on this item. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number two, miscellaneous council items. Paul, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
I'll accept a motion through. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to compliment and thank the officers involved last week in the shots fired incident. Fortunately, no one, no one was shot and the suspect was, was taken into custody. But the sheer bravery, honestly, in the face of danger and getting shot at is a small thing. And a big reason why all the people of Shawnee really appreciate our police department. So thank you to those officers in particular. Nice job.
Anyone else? I'll accept them. You have something to share?
Oh, yeah, I do have a quick one. I had the opportunity to volunteer this weekend. I was able to sign up through the city of Shawnee Volunteer Portal. It was fantastic and I really encourage other people to visit that portal, find something that speaks to you and just join in another wonderful aspect of our community.
I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
A motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We are adjourned.
And we will start council committee meeting in approximately five minutes.